Will Clark, please read the statement.
...the meeting of the Towns- Council of the Township of Vernon for Monday, April 14, 2014. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided to the public and the press on January 8, 2014. It was posted in the municipal building in accordance with the United Nations Act and DSA 10, colon, "For that sex."
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kadeish?
Here.
Councilmember Murphy?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Here.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Here.
Council President Lynch?
Here. Please join me with the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its sustenance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This point, I'd like to have a motion to open the floor to public comments.
So move.
Motion made by Councilmember Kadeish. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Wetzel. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The floor is open for anyone wish to speak.
I just want to briefly say that the Vernon Historical Society over the past weekend had a new event. It was a wonderful, wonderful event. It was a photography exhibit in which we showcased Vernon Township, Vernon through the years, and we had 119 photographs submitted for this exhibit, many of whom, many of which were donated to the Historical Society for auction. I invited the entire council and the mayor and a number of other individuals. Thank you, Councilwoman Jean Murphy, for coming and supporting our cause. Councilman Rizzuto, Councilman Wet- Wet- Wetzel? Between Wexler, Wetzel, Wetzel. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Mayor Morata. I understand you had a prior commitment, Council President Lynch, so no problem. You've always supported us in the past, but it was just a wonderful, wonderful event. We had 36 student submissions, and you know what? It was just a real feel-good community event, and Lord knows, we need more of those around here. So I just wanted to let you know about it. It was such a success, we'll probably do it again next year. It'll probably end up being one of our annual events. So thank you to those who came, and we hope next year you'll make it.
Job well done, Jess.
I'd like to comment, the photos that were displayed were extraordinarily beautiful. Some of them more so than others, naturally, but I particularly am enthused with your idea of using many of these photos as cover plates for a calendar. We live in a community that has such a natural beauty that I think we frequently take it for granted, and certainly the photos that were exhibited brought that back to mind and drove it home.
Anyone else wish to speak?
My name's Ted Warnet from Highland Lakes, and I'm here to talk about this whole issue that's been destroying our town again. More crap that goes on, and it's all about the mayor's raise. I mean, for years, I've been here, and previous councils, alls I saw was negative crap coming out of the paper about what goes on at our council meetings, what kind of stuff has been happening behind closed doors, people walking out, all ticked off at meetings. The last three or four years have probably been the nicest three or four years that I can remember reading about in the paper. It's all been positive, all been good stuff, and the only thing I can associate to is the fact that we brought in a new form of government and we elected a mayor. A mayor who, in my eyes, has done an excellent job, who has actually turned things around in his town, brought some revenues in. Our taxes have gone down two years in a row. I just can't believe that there's so much controversy. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we went to this new form of government, I could have swore, and I know I read it several times in a lot of statements, is that the council is responsible for setting the mayor's salary. I don't even understand why it's even in ordinance if the council sets it. That doesn't make sense. But a lot of the stuff that I've been reading in the paper, unfortunately, comes back to one common denominator, and that's a former mayor of ours, Sally Rinker. It just seems like every time I turn around, her name is always being mentioned about, let's, you know, we can't have this raise of the salary. And now we have to have the people vote on whether he gets a raise or not. I don't understand. I thought that's why we have a council. I thought you guys make the decision for us. I thought that's what the purpose of it was. I saw in the paper, Councilperson Murphy, you mentioned that it's not up to the resident, the few residents up on that council to make that decision. That's what we voted you in for, is to make these decisions. I don't, I don't, I don't get it. I don't, I'm curious why we have to have special votes to decide how to spend the money. I mean, what's next? Next time we need a new police car or a garbage truck, we're going to have to have a special vote? It doesn't make any logical sense to me. This is what the council's for. I did a lot of research the last couple of days, and, you know, there's talk about, well, whether the job should be full-time or not. Well, Mrs. Rinker herself said, when she was running for mayor, that it should be a full-time job. Not only should it be a full-time job, but the salary should be set at $80,000. We're talking about $70,000. It's $10,000 less. Now, if the mayor has taken over the responsibility of our town managers, who we used to have, who made all these decisions, if you look back in the records, we were paying these people nothing less than $133,000 a year. One of them, we even spent $15,000 to relocate them into this town. Another one, $7,000 to relocate him into this town. It's not making any sense to me. We got a resolution to give him a raise. All of a sudden, there's a petition by a bunch of people that says, whoa, we got to vote on this. Okay, fine, that's, that's their right, but I just can't seem to think that this is all just a negative attack on our mayor because certain people didn't win their position as mayor or councilperson. And just, it's really bugging me. I think that we have a lot more important things to worry about in this town than giving a man who has earned his money than, than, you know, to be dealing with this stuff.
Thank you, Ted. You have five minutes. Anyone else like to speak?
Just what I'm here for today is to ask the council and the mayor to show the rest of the state and the rest of the nation that what happened in our middle school two weeks ago is not a representation of our town.
Can you just state your name for the record?
John Swank. From what I'm understanding, a child had a pencil in his hand, which was conceived as a gun by another student. By the very nature of what's going on politically in America today, this boy was removed from his school, was strip-searched, had forced blood drawn and urine, right? Now, if this is the type of activity that we're going to be teaching in our schools, and as, as you all have pointed out to us, maybe two, three we- two, three meetings ago, 60% of our town taxes is going to this Board of Education, and that's the majority of what we're paying for. We're paying to educate students, right? Well, what I see is, we're teaching them a form of totalitarianism, if not communism, and that's not the message that I want my tax money going towards. And basically, I'd like to see something done by this council and by the mayor. What happened is unacceptable. If that were my child, I don't even think I'd be able to be here rationally talking to you right now. I'd be off the handle. Anyway.
I understand your point. We have a liaison meeting with the Board of Education in a few weeks.
Okay, so there's a, there's a plan?
There's no plan to do anything other than to talk with the Board of Education over what happened, that's all.
The next Board of Ed meeting.
You have to go to the Board of Ed to find out.
Thank you.
Point is well taken. Anyone else like to speak?
Bonnie Rubin, Highland Lakes, and I'd just like to say that tonight is the first night of Passover, and I'm disappointed in this council. I hope it's a lack of awareness and not an insensitivity to convene this session on what is a very significant religious holiday. So I'm, I'm quite disappointed, just to let you know that.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, can I have a motion to close public comments? Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Wetzel. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, tonight, we have some proclamations. First is the Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month of April for, as many of you know, Parkinson's disease is a neurological disorder which affects more than 1 million Americans. To date, despite decades of intensive study, the causes of Parkinson's remain unknown. Many experts think that the disease is caused by a combination of genetic and environmental factors, which may vary from person to person. This proclamation declares April as Parkinson's Awareness Month in Vernon Township. I'm going to ask that Councilmember Kadeish, please read the proclamation.
It's kind of appropriate, since we're going into NYU tomorrow, to, Carol's going to go through the Michael J. Fox Clinic, her second annual experiment with-
Good luck.
-with that clinic. Proclamation, whereas Parkinson's disease is a progressive neurological movement disorder of the central nervous system, which has a unique impact on each patient, and whereas, according to the Parkinson's Action Network, the Parkinson's Disease Foundation, and the National Parkinson Foundation, the American Parkinson's Disease Association, and the National Institutes of Health, there are over 1 million Americans diagnosed with Parkinson's disease. And whereas, symptoms include slowness, tremor, difficulty with balance and speaking, rigidity, cognitive and memory problems, and whereas, although new medicines and therapies may enhance life for some time for people with Parkinson's, more work is needed for the cure. And whereas, increased education and research are needed to help find more effective treatments with fewer side effects, and ultimately, a cure for Parkinson's disease. And whereas, a multidisciplinary approach to Parkinson's disease care includes local wellness support and caregiver groups, and whereas, April has been proclaimed as worldwide Parkinson's Awareness Month for all to recognize the need for more research and help in dealing with the devastating effects of Parkinson's disease. Now therefore, the mayor and the council of the township of Vernon do hereby proclaim April 2014 as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in Vernon Township, given under his hand in these free United States in the Township of Vernon on this 14th day of 2014, and to which I have caused the seal of the Township of Vernon to be affixed, and have made this proclamation public. The mayor and the council president sign.
Thank you, Dan. Good luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I have the proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Child abuse is an issue that affects people in every socio-economic level across ethnic and cultural lines. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Administration on Children, Children's Bureau reports that approximately 70% of children that die from abuse under the age of, die under the age of four. That is one of the reasons why it is so important to recognize this problem. Child Abuse Prevention Month is a statewide campaign to raise awareness about supporting families and preventing child abuse. The proclamation, whereas, the maltreatment, abuse, and neglect of children is a significant social problem that damages children physically, mentally, and emotionally, and inflicts immeasurable harm on society as a whole, and all children deserve to be nurtured, protected, and free from physical or emotional harm. And whereas, the mayor and the council of the township of Vernon, as well as the State of New Jersey and the Department of Children and Families, believes that strong, healthy families are the best place to raise children. And whereas, the mayor and the council of the township of Vernon, as well as the State of New Jersey, are committed to building a continuum of community-based child abuse prevention and intervention programs that are culturally competent, strength-based, and family-centered, and that achieve positive outcomes for parenting and family relationships, as well as the empowerment of domestic violence victims and their children. And whereas, the mayor and the council of the township of Vernon, as well as New Jersey Department of Children and Families, embraces the standards for prevention programs developed by the New Jersey Task Force on Child Abuse and Neglect, and whereas, all sectors of the community, including law enforcement, medical professionals, schools, courts, and media outlets, as well as numerous public and private agencies, have joined forces to promote public awareness and community involvement in strengthening families during the month of April and continuing throughout the year. Now therefore, the mayor and the council of Township of Vernon do hereby proclaim April 2014 as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in Vernon Township, and urge our residents to become involved in efforts aimed at strengthening families and communities and preventing our children from being abused and neglected. Given under my hand in these free United States in the Township of Vernon on this 14th day of 2014, and to which I have caused the seal of the Township of Vernon to be affixed, and have made this proclamation public, Victor J. Morata, Mayor, and Brian Lynch, Council President. Thank you very much. This time, I'd like to have the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, I would like to address the gentleman who spoke about the issue with the Board of Education, and it offers us an opportunity to do a bit of education, if I may. Our council and this mayor actually are totally in the same position as you as a citizen. The Board of Education is elected autonomously. They are chartered under the state statutes, and frankly, while we have the opportunity to speak to issues the same way you do, and during our liaison meetings with the Board of Education, we do speak to those issues, we have no authority whatsoever, other than to make them aware of the thoughts of the council and the mayor. Now, that's not meant as a cop-out, but it's meant to let you know that your concern, while it's being heard loud and clear here, if you want to change what's going on, you got to get involved in the Board of Education. You've got to go to their meetings. You've got to educate yourself about what's going on. You need to look at all of the things that are being done in regard to the way our children are being educated, and let the Board of Education know how you feel, the same way you do when you come here to the council meetings, and let the council know what you think about the way things are being done here. Their meetings are posted on their website. Certainly, if you have any questions about when they are, you can go to the www.vtst website. All of their meetings are listed as the time, the place, and I believe that it's time that, number one, the media begin to cover the activities of the Board of Education more thoroughly, and number two, that we as a community, let the board know that we're interested in what's happening in our schools and with our children. So if I may, it's not a lack of interest on the part of the governing body here, but we are separated by statute, and all we can do really is make our feelings and opinions known. Secondly, tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m., the United Water Company and their complete engineering and legal staff will be here for what will be, I hope, a very productive meeting concerning the issue of water in the parts of our town where we have sewer but no central water. I've spoken to the council many times about this over the past year. The negotiations and the discussions are moving forward, and they're moving forward with, they're gaining a certain degree of rapidity here. I fully hope that by the time we meet on the 28th of April, I will be able to give you some hard facts and numbers as to what kind of dollars and cents it will take to achieve this project. Any of you who are available tomorrow morning at 9:00 and would like to sit in and listen to the meeting, you're certainly welcome to be there. And lastly, today, I spent most of the day in Trenton. I joined some 200 mayors and freeholders from all over the state of New Jersey, from both political parties, to stand with the governor and tell the Speaker of the Assembly that we want the bill posted concerning interest arbitration. As you know, the Senate and the Assembly passed the 2% cap law, which would keep in place the restrictions on governing bodies from raising their property taxes more than 2%. But frankly, without passage of the ancillary bill, the partner bill to that, i.e. interest arbitration 2%, that, the 2% cap law means nothing, because we could find ourselves with public employees who aren't pleased by the negotiation that's going on, going into arbitration and being faced with some of the things that have happened historically in the past, with outrageous settlements implied, or imposed, if you will, by people who absolutely have no skin in the game, so to speak. And so, I've been asked by the governor, along with all the other people who took part, this is not a Republican-Democrat issue. This is an issue that speaks to the future of property tax reform in the state of New Jersey, and I would just want to report to the council that we need to bring as much pressure to bear on the Speaker of the Assembly to post that bill. The last time it went before the Assembly, it passed with only one negative vote, and in fact, the present speaker voted in favor of it. Why he refuses to do that is beyond me, and I think beyond most logic. I thank you. That ends my report.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the minutes from the following meetings? We'll start off with executive session minutes for December 9, 2013. Can I have a motion, please? Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto. Can I have a second? I'll second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have to abstain.
Any abstentions? Work session minutes on January 23rd, 2014. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Motion made by Councilmember Kadeish. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rizzuto. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Regular meeting minutes, January 27, 2014. May I have a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Wetzel. All in favor, signify, yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Murphy, for bringing this to my attention. Within the body of the minutes, I'm going to bring the council's attention to page nine. This was in response, initial question, where I stated, Mr. Rizzuto, that's two Z's, one T, stated at the time, council hired the mayor. I don't believe I said that. It probably was in the, it was taken out of context. It would have been something along the line, was presented with an elected mayor, and they were required, the council, by law, to set the salary, Mr. Warnet brought out, and they tried to dissuade him from accepting his present salary, which at the time was $30,000, which he said he believed that the people of Vernon would understand about a salary range, after the mayor had had his opportunity to go over finances and see exactly where things stood. And the council reluctantly agreed to this and told them they would increase that amount to $70,000 at a later date. So, just with the correction of that hired, I, I find that acceptable.
Can I have a motion? Motion made by Councilmember Murphy. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rizzuto. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
With those corrections?
With those corrections?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Work session minutes of February 10, 2014. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Motion made by Councilmember Kadeish. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rizzuto. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
You skipped January 31st. January 31st, you skipped.
31st, we didn't get to, okay.
That's because we got two fours.
Okay.
(laughing).
I guess the second one's a what for?
What for? Okay, executive work session minutes of January 31st, 2014. Can I have a motion, please? Motion made by Councilmember Kadeish. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rizzuto. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, regular meeting minutes of March 10th, 2014. Can I have a motion, please? Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wetzel. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I have a little change.
Okay.
It's actually on page six of it, and I spoke to it, just has to do with when I questioned if Andy Mulverhill was rescheduled to come to the meeting, so it's just rewording that line there.
With those corrections, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The consent agenda, pretty lengthy meeting tonight. Okay, the first resolution, 1453, resolution to read the 2014 municipal budget by title only at the public hearing. Under the New Jersey budget law, the budget must be read in full at the public hearing, unless the governing body passes a resolution prior to the hearing allowing for the budget to be read by title only. In order to do so, a representative from the municipality must make a copy of its budget available to the local library and the clerk's office. The budget was delivered and has been available at the library's clerk's office since March 11, 2014, immediately after its introduction. Resolution 1454, awarding a contract with minerals for the senior luncheon. Each year, the township sponsors a senior luncheon in May. At the lunch, the senior citizen of the year is recognized. This resolution allows the township to enter into a contract with minerals to host the 2014 senior luncheon. Resolution 1455, authorizing a contract with Microsystems for 2014. The township Tax Assessor's Office utilizes a computer services program for the purpose of tax assessment, Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal, or CAMA. The township would like to continue the contract with Microsystems, our current provider, for this purpose. This resolution allows the township to continue the contract with Microsystems. Resolution 1456, authorizing a tax sale pre- Resolution 1456, authorizing a tax sale premiums to a sheet to the township. In 2008, a tax sale took place and a tax certificate was sold. Pursuant to tax law, if after five years redemption of that certificate has not taken place, the premium paid will a sheet to the township. This resolution provides for the premiums to have not—that have not been redeemed to a sheet to the township. Resolution 1457, authorizing agreement with gold-type business machines for e-ticketing turnkey system. As part of the capital plan, the township anticipated the purchase of hardware and software program to improve the efficiency of the police department when issuing motor-vehicle tickets. This resolution authorizes the execution of the agreement for that purchase. Resolution 1458, authorizing the contract with the land conservancy of New Jersey—for the open space advisory consultant services. The open space advisory consultant assists the township with landowner negotiations and preparation of grant application in regards to the township's open space funds. The land conservancy is a not-for-profit, whose mission is to protect open space. This resolution allows the township to execute a contract for one year with the land use conservancy to provide open space consulting services. Resolution 1459, authorizing a self-exam of the 2014 budget. The local finance board examines a minimum of one-third of the state's annual municipal budgets. The other municipalities are not being examined by the state, are eligible for self-examination. Vernon's budget was examined last year by the local finance board, and as such, the township is eligible for self-exam this year. This resolution authorizes a self-examination of the township budget as certified by our The resolution 1460, authorizing the mayor to sign a letter urging for full funding of the federal payment in lieu of tax program for local governments. Properties owned by the federal government are exempt from local taxes. The federal payment in lieu of taxes program provides payments to local governments to offset this loss in tax revenue. However, the funding for this program expired in 2013. This resolution authorizes the mayor to sign a letter requesting consideration of the consistent source of funding for the federal payment in lieu of tax program. Resolution 1461, authorizing the award contract for professional services, computer technician services. The township has a need for computer IT services. Our current service provider has relocated out of the state, and therefore, the township needs a new service provider for IT. This resolution authorizes the mayor to sign a contract for IT services with a new provider, DRCO Service LLC. Can I have a motion to adopt resolutions 1453 through 1461?
So move.
Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Wetzel. Any comments? Any—
I actually—I did have questions on two of them.
Okay.
On 1458, these—once the conservancy—I know we're voting on the conservancy, but once—if they determine that these properties will, I guess, be going to, whether it's preservation or wherever, that'll come before the council to vote on?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The New Jersey Land Conservancy, at least since the beginning of this administration, has served several purposes. The most, I think, important one at this point is the completion of a complete inventory of those properties that are either owned by Vernon Township already, or those properties that we hold the tax certificates for and helped us develop a priority list of which properties to foreclose on, because there are properties that are adjacent both to the Federal Wildlife Reserve on the west side of town, as well as the way we own the state park, and the Appalachian Trail that the state of New Jersey is interested in owning. And so the work that's been done by the land conservancy through 2013 has put us in a very good position to reap actually a capital return on those pieces of property. But nothing that they do is outside the purview of the council.
And I also—I'm questioning also because they have a list of a few of the properties they're looking at, and this Anthem Realty out of Monaco. Actually, this property is listed by my broker, but of course, I have no personal gain, even though I work for Prudential. I have no personal gain or anything in it, but I just wanted to make that clear.
Is that the piece over off of Maple Grange?
It is.
Then you know that we recently had an inquiry from the New Jersey DEP, and apparently they are going to purchase that land and add it to—
And we'll lose the tax money.
Yes, we will. There's no question about it, but it'll preserve the land in perpetuity.
But I just bring it up because I'm an independent contractor at Prudential, so. And the other one was 1461, the contract for services. This just says computer technician services, and I just—I know the other one—the other professional service, it said it was for the tax assessor's department, but what is—I was just wondering what this was for.
I know that the rest of the council would know. For many years, a gentleman by the name of Kevin Blumenthal was our IT specialist. He was available in Town Hall one day a week for repair, corrections, software, all kinds of issues that come up every single day. Kevin and his wife have moved to the Chicago area. The gentleman from DRCO will provide the same service at the same price and will be available to our people at least once a week. We're looking at maybe doing a half a day twice a week. That really hasn't been settled, but nonetheless, it's basically to be sure that our computers are working efficiently.
Okay, so that Kevin's—I—
That has nothing to do with the resolution for—I shouldn't say nothing to do, but indirectly, it has to do with the software being used by our tax assessor's office. If, for example, there is a glitch or something that happens in the course of the operation, our IT—internal IT man will look at it first before we go outside.
So he—the this person is a replacement for Kevin?
That's correct.
And who's—who is this?
His name is David Ragnetti.
Okay, that was—those are my only questions.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Katush?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Councilmember Lenz?
Yes, and I'd just like to say on the record, wish Kevin Blumenthal and his family all the luck on them.
We're gonna miss him for sure.
He is gonna be missed.
Always nice to see.
I think he was hired in 2011, if I'm not mistaken.
I know he was here when I came.
Okay, the auditor presentation of the 2013 municipal budget—municipal audit. Mr. Mayor or Mr. Jones, would you like to make your presentation?
I'd like to introduce Mr. Francis Bud Jones of the Mississippa Company. Mr. Jones, if you'd be kind enough to give the council and the public your report.
Sure. Good evening. We met with the mayor and the administration to review the draft of the audit report. We discussed some issues that we had during the course of the audit. The financial position of the township has improved from 2012 to the end of 2013. Fund balance increased from $2.8 million to $3.3 million, almost a half a million-dollar increase. The debt of the township, net debt of the township decreased again, as it had for the prior year. The township is roughly has a little bit less than a third of the net debt that the township can issue, so there's another two-thirds of debt available to the township, so you're nowhere near your debt limit. We had only one recommendation in the report, and this recommendation is related to segregation of duties, and it's pretty much in every one of our municipal reports, because generally speaking, you're not going to hire enough people in order to segregate duties enough to improve internal control. And it's more of a heads-up that this is an issue, it's an ongoing issue in municipalities across the state, but you should be aware of it. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them at this point.
Mr. Jones, did you see any evidence that any of the debt service is being used to fund the current operations?
No, and you would not be permitted to do so.
Along those same lines, did you see any evidence that the use—the township used conservancy trust fund money to fund its operations?
No, and again, you would not be allowed to do so. There's—the state has very specific requirements regarding budgeting and use of trust funds, and if we saw any indication of that, we would obviously report it, and we would have to be reported to the state also. And the state would not allow you to do that.
Thank you.
Sure.
I think, looking at the audit that we looked at when we first took office in 2000—mid 2011, I believe the audit at that time had 22 recommendations.
Something like that.
And we're in the course of three years now. We're down to one, the same one that we had last year, and it's the same one that appears in almost every audit throughout the state, because auditors want segregation, and townships don't want to spend the money for enough people. I just want to compliment the mayor and his staff and his people on a job well done. You've made us all proud.
Records have consistently approved—improved every year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, resolution 1462 to 2013 annual audit. The Jersey statute requires that each municipality annually audit its books and accounts that a copy of the audit be provided to the governing body. This resolution acknowledges that the governing body has received the 2013 annual audit, and pursuant to state statute, has read the comments and the recommendation section of the audit. Can I have a motion to adopt resolution 1462?
So move.
Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second made by Councilmember Wetzel.
Councilmember Katush?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
And yes, before I—recognizing my vote, I would also just like to apologize to our chief financial officer, Elka. She did a wonderful job and worked and put this together. Thank you very much. Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lenz?
Again, Elka, thank you for your hard work. You're well from Dr. No. Okay, public hearing, second reading of the ordinance on the cap bank, ordinance 1403. Ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank, NJSA 40A colon four slash 45.14. For informational purposes, the cap bank ordinance needs to be adopted prior to the adoption of the municipal budget, which is why this item is a little out of order in our agenda today, as public hearings on ordinances typically come later on in the meeting. As discussed, when this ordinance was introduced, Mr. Jones, the auditor can provide a detailed technical explanation of the cap, but in brief, the state set a cap or limit in the amount of the spending the municipality may make on items in order to keep municipal taxes low. The cap bank order reserve allows that if a municipality does not spend all of its limit as allowed by law in a given year, it may bank or reserve that amount for future years, up to two years. May I have a motion to open for the ordinance for a public hearing? May I have a motion, open to the public? Motion made by Councilmember Katush. Can I have a second?
So move.
Second by Councilmember Rizzuto. It is open to the public. Anyone wish to speak? Okay, can I have—seeing that no members of the public are wishing to come forward, may I have a motion to close the public hearing and adopt 1403 on second reading?
Second.
Motion made by Katush, second by Rizzuto. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Katush?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lenz?
Yes.
Motion carries through, and supports the motion on second reading.
Thank you. The public hearing of 2014 municipal budget. The 2014 budget for the third straight year has reduced municipal taxes. May I have a motion, open the public hearing of the 2014 municipal budget?
Motion.
Motion made by Councilmember Murphy. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rizzuto. Anyone from the public wish to speak on the 2014 municipal budget? Seeing no members of the public are wishing to come forward, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make that motion.
Motion made by Councilmember Wetzel. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rizzuto. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Katush?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lenz?
Yes. Good job on the budget this year. Very good job.
It was a team effort, as you well know. We've got a good team.
Third straight year in a row, we should—
Got ourselves on the back.
Well—
I think it's a way of saying to the people of Vernon—
I find it awful amusing that they're creating a planning steering committee in the county, and they included everybody, it seemed, but Vernon Township, which lowered the taxes three years in a row, and we're the biggest community in Sussex County. Maybe they're steering away from lowering taxes again in the county. An introduction, first reading of opposed ordinance.
Do the vote to adopt the budget.
I'm sorry, I thought we did that.
That was to vote the public hearing.
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the municipal budget?
So move.
I would—I'd like to make some comments before you—
Okay.
Go to that.
Can—we have a second before you—
Aye.
Put it on the floor, yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto made the motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Wetzel. Okay, Councilman Katush.
I think there are some things that we probably should consider for the year before we pass this, and that is, I understand that there's a new drug, which is an anti-drug, and we've—
Narcan?
Yes. And I just feel that our cops and our first responders and our ambulance crew should be trained as soon as possible, because I understand it's very effective, very effective in stopping the progression of death. The patients, immediately when they're being injected, return to speaking and recover very quickly in order to get them to the hospital. And I think it's a life-saving thing, and Vernon has a problem, and all Sussex County has a problem, and I think to initiate this the way they have in New York City would be a godsend. I also think that the Historic Preservation Commission should be responsible for caring for a lot of the small abandoned secretaries, and I think—cemeteries, and I think—I think that we should have a budget item there to support that. I think it'd be a very good idea, since there are hidden cemeteries in which the tombstones have been destroyed by young people, and there are other people trying to restore them, and it'd be a good benefit to the township to have the Historic Commission be budgeted to care for that. I also don't approve of having the ban shell, $100,000, $125,000 item in the budget. I also don't approve to having a loose amount of $60,000 for just any litigation. I think it should be approved by the council. And I think that the bonus awards program should be an entry that we have in the budget as well. So those are the things that I think we really need to work on before we pass this budget.
Let me say that the Historical Preservation Commission has done all types of research on the cemeteries, and it's section by section, okay, to try to get them—
Yes, but they don't have any budget for it. They don't have any budget for restoring the stones or taking care of it, or even hiring people to clear the brush and trees.
You know, it's ironic that we're at the last—we're at the 11th hour to adopt the budget. We've had a number of budget hearings, and there was no request to consider that—those entries into the—for the mayor's consideration in the budget to raise it.
Well—
I certainly—
We had talked about having a meeting, it didn't take place—
Doing something about the cemeteries, but I think it's something that we'll have to carry over to next year, and as far as the narcan, that is—it's not really a new drug. It's been around for a while, but it has—it's never really been put into a format or a method of use that it could be given to people who were not professionally trained, such as a doctor or a nurse. Now they've been able to bring it into use so that it can be used somewhat like in a self-injectable, like insulin. self-injectable, like insulin, or a short-acting pain reliever.
An EpiPen.
So, you know, and I think the training for that probably would be within the scope of the normal, uh, of the normal training schedules that our EMT people go through.
I'll check with Charlie on that, yeah. I'd also like to question the, the ban shell. I mean, if we're going to be thought of as caviar and champagne, then we've got to add some culture. This is a step forward for culture, and if you're, if you like the arts, if you appreciate the arts, then this is, well, a step in the right direction. My personal opinion.
Once again, that issue, we, we did have a number of meetings, including discussion of the capital budget, so that was in it. I agree with Mr. Wetzel. This is an item, and in talking, having a number of people speak with me after it was brought out, they just felt that the idea of having, you know, a passive recreation site where people could come and listen to music, outdoor plays, take advantage of the beautiful areas around the Maple Grange Park, they just felt that was an ideal situation for it. Now, I know there have been a number of comments as to why not locate it in the center of town, honestly. Ban shells are used to project sound and to make something of a musical nature more true. Having to compete with traffic sounds and that type of ambient noise makes it much more difficult for anybody to hear. Secondly, the, the area that we are talking about, that's being proposed, is owned by the township, and there's no problem in terms of citing. These things are not, uh, designed for small group use. They're designed for what they are, as it means to be able to project sound either on a play or on a music so that people can hear them. And we do have a perfect location for it, and I think at some point, this type of capital investment is something that the community would benefit from it. I'd thank the, uh, people from our high school when we used to have jazz at the flats, and it was always well-attended, and I think this is an opportunity for the community to, perhaps, experience music of that type in a much more relaxed atmosphere. Thank you, Mr. Wetzel. Your turn.
Any other council members have anything?
I do. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's in the capital budget, wouldn't that be something we would vote on again anyway?
Absolutely.
So then, even though it's in there, we would still have to vote by two-thirds in order to suspend it?
Actually, that was one of the reasons I raised my hand. Um, all of those items that, that, except for the training, and I'd like to speak to that, Councilman Kadeish, are items that will have to get the approval of the council because it'll come forward in the form of a bond. I want to speak to the issue of Narcan for a second, if I may. First, um, the fire and ambulance squads in Vernon Township are in fact funded directly from our budget, and part of the money that we pay them as rent for their buildings is designed to go to training. However, I can tell you that the kind of training that will be required for our police and our ambulance and fire people to administer Narcan is the equivalency of an EMT training. So you're talking about literally thousands of dollars and hundreds of man-hours. I do believe, if there's anyone here from the ambulance squad who is an EMT, they can speak to the amount of time it takes to become certified. But at present, the New Jersey state statute is encouraging the use of Narcan, but they're also requiring it that it be administered by a licensed-certified EMT. So, um, you're talking about a huge investment. I'm not suggesting that we don't do it, but I do think that you need to know what the ramifications of that suggestion are.
Well, I was wondering whether the MAC grant could be increased to include it?
Twenty thousand dollars that we get from the state hardly even covers the things that MAC does now.
And you've got to look at this, this way, too. How many firefighters do you have that want to go through this, that have the time to go through it? This is something that has nothing to do...
I'm not saying that everybody should...
Yeah, no, well, a good majority should have it.
There are some that are trained as...
Good majority should have it, then. If, I, I agree with the Narcan, but if, uh, quite frankly, that discussion doesn't have anything to do with this budget right now.
I have another, uh, something else that Mr. Kadeish brought up. Obviously, the bonuses, which has been a hot topic in the last few years. So my, my question being is if I vote yes on this budget, am I in fact giving you authority to give employee performance awards?
Uh, my understanding is yes.
Okay.
Um, however, I assume that that's going to be decided by Judge Wiesenbeck in the very near future.
Okay. And, and the reason I actually bring that up, and now Kevin could comment on this, because back in September, when you appeared before the judge, Wiesenbeck, a couple of the questions he asked you, he asked if he had a copy of the 2012 budget, which he did not. He also asked you if it was a line item in the budget, which it is not, and then he also asked if the council had passed an ordinance on bonuses, a bonus ordinance, which they had not. So that, those were items that he brought up, and that was, that was back in September of 2012.
I really, out of respect, I don't think that we should be discussing legal issues at, at this moment, not because of anything else, but we have pending litigation right now.
But...
I understand what you're saying.
So do you want me to vote no on the budget because of it? I'm just...
You vote however you want to vote. I'm just making a suggestion.
But that's why I'm, but I'm bringing that up because...
You can continue to say whatever you like.
Okay.
I'm just saying that I think it's dangerous to talk about litigation that's pending.
Well, whether it's pending or not, the point is, I did go there, and I did listen for myself what the judge had to say, and those were items that he did ask and he did request. So to me, I think it's a very fair question that I'm asking, because those were things that he brought up. It was public. Anybody could go and hear.
Mm-hmm.
And now, of course, I do not want to end up in a lawsuit. I know all of you are. I personally do not want to end up in one.
Why'd you run for the council?
Not to, not to end up...
That's a good question.
If it's pending, if it's pending litigation, why would I, why would I want to subject myself to it?
What I was implying...
So you're asking me why I ran, and Brian's telling me I shouldn't talk about it. I don't think the two of you...
I'm suggesting, I'm not telling you anything.
Well...
I would never tell you anything.
What I was implying was that by dint of your responsibility, it's virtually impossible not to be involved in some kind of litigation during your term.
Of course, but this is an obvious one that's been ongoing.
Because the judge asks questions doesn't mean that the judge is going to decide that there's anything wrong.
You're absolutely right, but it was still, it, it, those were still issues that were brought up, and they're, and it's a fact that it's not in there, so...
Um, I beg to differ. It's salary and wages.
What, what I'm saying is that it's not a line item in it. That's, and then when you...
It's constructed as salary and wages. They come in all shapes and forms.
I understand, but I'm still going back with what the judge was questioning.
Very good. I just want to be sure that you understand it is in the budget, and it certainly hasn't been hidden. It's been very transparent, and there isn't anybody who lives in Vernon that doesn't know that I believe in rewarding people for a job well done, and we have a program that does that.
Yep.
Do the council members have any other comments? Please call a roll.
Councilmember Kadeish?
No.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
To lower taxes for the third year in a row, yes.
Motion carries to adopt the 2014 municipal budget.
Thank you.
Ordinance amending, uh, Ordinance 1404. This is the first reading of this proposed ordinance. Amending the salary ordinance for the non-union employees. Ordinance 1404 does not set a salary for any one non-union employee, nor does it give any employee a raise. Ordinance 1404 merely establishes the salary ranges for each position pursuant to the Jersey statute and case law. As you may be aware, the council worked shop this ordinance and publicly discussed the reduction in the bottom numbers on the ranges in the March 31st, 2014 meeting. May I have a motion to introduce Ordinance 1404 with a public hearing to be held on April 28th, 2014?
Make that motion.
Motion made by Councilmembers Kadeish, second by Councilmember Wetzel, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Please call a roll.
Councilmember Kadeish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes.
Motion carries to introduce Ordinance 1404 with a public hearing to be held on April 28th, 2014.
Okay. Public hearing, second reading of ordinances, Ordinance 1406, an ordinance to repeal Township Ordinance 1401. When the petitioners filed their petition regarding Ordinance 1401 to the township, they included a request to repeal Ordinance 1401. The request to repe, repeal Ordinance 1401 was echoed by the mayor's office. Ordinance 1406 repeals Ordinance 1401, consistent with the wishes of the parties. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
To open the floor to the public hearing. Motion made by Councilmember Wetzel. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kadeish. Please call a roll.
Councilmember Kadeish?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto?
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel?
Yes.
Council President Lynch?
Yes. If anyone would like to step forward?
Good evening. Steve Ishkanti, Vernon, and, uh, John Allen Sarwich, 15 Hittin...
Bob Gary, Vernon.
We...
I didn't hear the last person.
Bob Gary, Vernon.
Thank you.
Uh, we, the petitioners disagree with Ordinance 1406 to repeal 1401, and I'd like to think it's time to read this letter into the record. On February 14th, 2014, we submitted a petition to repeal Township of Vernon Ordinance 1401, an ordinance to provide and determine the salary for the mayor of the Township of Vernon, which was approved by the votes on, by your votes on January 27th, 2014. The submission of the petition was well within the 20 days that was required by law. The petition was certified on February 28th, 2014, and notification of certification was sent by email to the mayor, the council, Kevin Kelly, Vernon's attorney, by the deputy clerk. On February 14th, 2012, the committee of petitioners submitted a petition to repeal Township of Vernon's Ordinance 1201, an ordinance to provide and determine range of compensations for specified officers and employees of the Township of Vernon. The petition was submitted within the 20 days that is required by law. At the town council meetings in January, February, March of 2012, the petitioners asked the council to rescind Ordinance 1201 before it needed to go on the ballot. Kevin Kelly, Vernon's attorney, insisted citing case law, City of Ocean, City versus Somerville, and stating at the March 12th, 2012 council meeting the following. I want to be very clear for the record, it is not possible for this council to vote to rescind the ordinance that is subject of a successful petition. The law does not provide for that. Any suggestion of that is false and puts this council and the public in a petition of, in a position of thinking that the council has anything to do with it. It is wrong. It is time we correct the record. The matter has to go by law on the ballot in November, and this council can take no action. Mr. Kelly said repeatedly that this case lawsuit recedes the Faulkner Act, which is our form of government, and the question went straight to the ballot. Faulkner Act states that the clerk must notify the council after certifying petition without delay. The council was notified on February 28th by email that the deputy clerk certified petition pertaining to Vernon Council Ordinance 1401. The certification of the petition was announced by the Vernon clerk at the March 10th council meeting and was the second time the council was notified. It was the council's, it was on the council's agenda that evening for discussion, but no discussion ensued. If Faulkner Act does apply, which gives the council 20 days to rescind the ordinance after the petition is certified, the council is notified then. The council's time to act has long expired. On March 31st, 2014 council meeting, the council moved to introduce an ordinance to rescind 1401, the subject of the certified petition. We disagree with the language in the newly drafted ordinance 1406, whereby is written that the committee of petitioners had made a formal demand that the council repeal 1401. The word "immediately" was left out. The committee of petitioners expected the council to act immediately within the 20 days allowed by law. The council failed to repeal 1401 immediately, and the, the council also failed to repeal 1401 within the 20 days, if that is even applicable. In fact, the petition submitted was the subject of verbal assaults by the mayor, including inscriptions that him, by him, that the petition may not be legal. We believe the petition is legal and valid. The mayor, out of option, has resorted to asking the council to repeal 1401. The committee of petitioners objects to the introduction of Ordinance 1406 to repeal Ordinance 1401, because the time of action by this council has expired, according to the Faulkner Act. According to Mr. Kelly's citing of case law, City of Ocean, City versus Somerville, the council never had the option at all. Just as citizens of Vernon are expected to follow the laws, we expect the same of our elected officials. If Kevin Kelly, Vernon's attorney, was correct in 2012 regarding salary ordinance 1201, when he prohibited the council from any action, then his legal advice would also be applicable today regarding salary ordinance 1401, and the question could, should go straight to the ballot again. If he is not correct, and we look at Faulkner, then 20 days after the notification of the certification, certified petition to the council has expired, and the question must go to the ballot at this point in time. The first notification to the council of certification of the petition ordinance 1401, occurring on February 28th, puts the amount of days at 45 days as of today. We assert that an email notification stands as required legal notice to the council. If one counts from the announcement on Jan, uh, on March 10th council meeting, then again, 20 days has passed, while 1401 is still not received. Our town is governed by the Faulkner Act, which allows the referendum petition process to repeal ordinance passed by the governing body. The petitioners did not affect a decision regarding salary ordinance 1401 for the public at large by accomplishing the submitted valid petition. The petitioners have given the voters of Vernon the right to decide for themselves by a majority vote on November 4th, 2014's general election on the matter. We do not wish to partake in circumventing the law, and not the committee of petitioners, nor the mayor, nor the council have the legal right at this point to prevent the question from, for the salary ordinance from going on to the voters of Vernon. Therefore, the committee of petitioners hereby declare, Vernon council is not authorized to act on rescinding ordinance 1401, according to Kevin Kelly, township attorney. We further declare that Faulkner does not allow action by the council beyond 20 days after notification of the certified petition. We wholly, singularly, and formally demand that the Vernon Township Council follow the laws that guide the petition process and preserve the democratic right of the voters, the Vernon voters, and vote on this issue as brought forward by the following referendum petition process. In support of the above statements and facts, the committee of petitioners hereby demand that the ballot question of the salary ordinance 1401 be sent to the Sussex County clerk for it to appear on the ballot in the general election on November 4th, 2014. And I have a copy for...
These are all copies. These are the copies.
All there. I'll take a bow. That's it. Thanks.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Vernon Angle, 31 Winachi Road in Hines Lakes, New Jersey. I, I have a question, and just something that just popped in my mind, and I don't have an answer to the question, and I'm just throwing it out there. Do, do we know what the cost of an election is going to, what the cost of the election's going to be?
I have that answer. It's zero.
It's zero?
It's zero. I checked with the county clerks off...
I checked with the county clerk's office. November election will cause zero. As a matter of fact, they said there's not even an additional charge for the ink.
Who pays for the election, then?
The county. It comes out of the county, but there's no extra charge for having...
So the taxpayers are still paying for the election?
But we're still gonna have a general election, so the question going on the ballot is not an extra cost.
Okay, all right.
And that was per Jeff Parrott, the county clerk.
Okay. Well, just for the record, I, for one, think this is a ridiculous petition, and, and I think you deserve the, the forty thousand dollars.
Thank you. Excuse me?
I just wanted to correct for the record the letter that was presented to me. It's here in my office, and it's dated April first, two thousand and fourteen. This is the first time my office has received this letter.
Okay. Please make that correction when you stamp it received.
Jesse Palladini, South Beach. I question whether this referendum question should go to November. If you read the statutes in the Faulkner Act, it's very clear to me that this needs to go to special election, and if it goes to special election, it'll cost twenty-five, forty, forty-five thousand dollars. So I would ask that you really carefully look over the statutes in the Faulkner Act. It very clearly, off the top of my head, I don't remember, very clearly says it has to be within so many days after the fact. So I question whether it even goes to November. A question for the attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, but can a council, can a governing body rescind any ordinance at any time?
Well, it depends what ordinance...
Are they limited to twenty days or forty days on this particular?
No.
I didn't think so. Thank you.
No, and by the way, there's no comparison between this ordinance and twelve oh one, what we did. There's no relationship between the two of those things.
I didn't think so, but I wanted to bring that up, too. I just want to say very quickly, and I believe they went way over five minutes, but I'm gonna try very hard to say this quickly. For three years now, there have been some people in this town who have been acting completely out of spite rather than right. Most of them were candidates in our elections who lost to the council members here and to the mayor, and they seem to be, as a result, engaging in a vendetta. The bottom line is they're dividing our community, and they are destroying our town. I don't believe that they're concerned with the best interest of our town, only in spite. Now, they circulated a petition, which is certainly their right to do so, and I would never object to anyone doing a petition because that's part of our democratic right under our form of government. But they got nearly a thousand signatures, and with the petition, they asked the township council to rescind the salary ordinance. Now they're here saying, "Don't do that." Well, what is that all about? They won. That's not enough for them? Frankly, I believe that there probably are enough residents in this town who are logical enough to know that a competent mayor should be paid more than thirty thousand dollars a year. Now, they'll say that I got up here and I said that because I have some kind of a vested interest, because the Board of Education leased a building to the Historical Society. My vested interest is the well-being of this town that I've lived in for thirty-five years. The auditor came up here tonight and made one recommendation, and as Councilman Rizzuto said, it's not anything to really be, you know, scolded about. I've sat here for twenty-five years of municipal budgets. Auditors have made twenty recommendations, fifteen recommendations, one recommendation. This town is being run, finally, after two decades that I've seen the way it should be run. But this issue has divided the community, and I say it's enough. They won. Put it to rest. Let the town heal from this. I suggested that you rescinded this back in February, but I'm here tonight to say, please put it to rest. Don't further divide the town between now and November. Dan and Jean, I'm gonna ask you to vote right, not spite.
Please address the...
Tonight. I'm addressing you, Councilman Cadish. We've had spite versus right long enough. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
My name's Paul Sodlitch. I live in Highland Lakes. This is the first time I've ever done anything like this, and I believe that we, as citizens, should be able to exercise this right, and I thank you for allowing this. I'm very naive on what actually this issue is. I've read things and had hearsay, but what I believe in, and I hope that every person here believes, that we should follow the law. If the law says to do it one way, that's it. Not what I wish, what I don't wish. And I'm gonna stop there because I can ramble on, and I'm not getting paid, so I'm gonna stop. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Bonnie Louve in Highland Lakes. And I had this whole chronology prepared after hearing Mrs. Palladini speak. I'd like to speak to what she said, and just so the council understands, this is the basic purpose of referendum petition under the New Jersey State Legislature, is to submit a legislative measure to a vote by the general public. So according to the chronology of what did happen was, there was a timeframe where this council could have rescinded this referen-, this petition. However, somehow it got out of the parameters of the accepted time that this could have happened legally. However, it didn't. Um, let me see. The council, the council had twenty days to withdraw the certification after twenty, February twenty-eighth, when it was certified, according to the Faulkner, the Faulkner Act, okay? And it also could have rescinded this ordinance immediately after the petition signatures were delivered to Andrea Bates, the township clerk, and that's under Faulkner Act legislation. However, or actually, from what Mr. Kelly said regarding ordinance twelve oh one, this could not have been rescinded at all, according to what your appellate division finding was. So...
It wasn't mine.
Pardon me?
It wasn't my finding.
Well...
I was citing a case.
Okay, your citation.
Right.
That's what I meant to say. Okay, so your citation said that it's not repealable at all, it's not rescindable at all.
To twelve oh one, not to this.
But this is rescindable. Why is this rescindable? Why is this different?
You wanna know what the difference is?
Yeah.
Twelve oh one had forty-five people in it who wanted to see the raises in the salaries go through. This has one who said he doesn't want to do it anymore. Where two sides to an issue agree, who are we? Who am I to say? No, we have to go to a judge and get a judge...
That's right. This should go to a higher court.
Okay, if, if one answers, hang on. If one answers, let's have a discussion, not a back and forth, okay?
I believe this should go to a higher court.
But that's fine. You can do something about that if you want.
And I think Mr. Parrott should do, I'm sure...
Whatever you want to do, it's up to you, but this group doesn't have to do that.
The whole thing is, this should have, if it was to be rescinded, could have done it within the timeframe that was allowable by law. By not doing it that way, by creating another ordinance to override that ordinance, you're breaking the law.
No, we're not.
Yes, you are.
That's a hyper-technicality that just...
Right. You're making your own law.
If you want to take that somewhere, go ahead. You have every right to do it. These people don't have to do that if they don't want to.
Well, I'd like to make a special appeal to Councilman Wetzel and his sense as a history teacher, because I'm sure, Mr. Wetzel, you did teach your students about the value of democracy and the right to vote, and this petition, now certified, gives Vernon voters the right to vote on this issue. So I'm asking that you please consider that, and I'm asking you to just follow the law, okay? And I'm asking the rest of the council to just follow the law, the Faulkner Act, regardless of all the, the negative or whatever findings, citations, that Mr. Kelly is pulling out of his hat.
No, I think, I think we're, alls we want to do is rub the mayor's nose in the dirt. I mean, the lawyer has already, I mean, how much, how much more damage do you want? You got what you wanted.
This is putting it to the people, not a vote.
You got what you wanted. What are you putting it to? Okay, there'll be no back and forth. Robert is up there. Robert?
Robert Oliver.
Sorry, Dick.
San Antonio Road, Vernon. I think Mr. Kelly summed it up very well. Twelve oh one had three parts to it. Maybe it should have been split at the time it wasn't. And as a result, it pretty much had to go to the vote. In this case, everybody seems to be in agreement that the issue should be put to bed. I happen to personally believe that the mayor is worth every penny of seventy thousand dollars, but, um, no, maybe I'm in the minority, I don't know. But I'm also prepared to disenfranchise myself, to quote Mrs. Murphy, God help me, to say, "Put it to bed." There is no issue. I don't see the issue. I really, truly do not see the issue. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm one of the petitioners, but I'd like to say one thing. We are presenting this information to you as a courtesy. It, our relationship is with the county clerk. We don't come here for your approval. We just want to notify you what we're doing, okay?
Thank you for being so gracious.
Alan Sarwich.
Does the county clerk, Mr. Kelly, have any right to involve himself into the internal affairs of the community?
Well, into this, no.
So his getting involved becomes somewhat of political meddling?
Well, I'm not aware of any involvement by the county clerk, who I see quite often. He works in the building right next to me, and he's never mentioned it to me, so...
Thank you.
My name is Krista Gary, and I'm here tonight because I would like to see everyone do what's legal and just. And I think this country was founded under God with liberty and justice for all, and I want to emphasize justice. The only way justice can be achieved at this time is by your making the right decision, and the right and positive choices, actually, for the good of all the people, and we should all set aside our differences and prejudices, and then this can be done and will be done. We have to follow through on this because it is the law, and the law takes precedence over everything. And that's all I have to say tonight.
I was up earlier. Another thing I'll never be accused of...
Ted Wernette.
Ted Wernette, Highland Lakes. One thing I can never be accused of being politically correct, that's for sure. I hate politics. I think Council President Lynch knows that better than anyone with me, but...
Well, I don't hate politics.
I can't, I can't help but emphasize once, again, this whole thing started because, and I, it's a vendetta. Someone lost to the mayor. The mayor wants, the mayor's done a great job. Now it's time to reward the mayor the proper way, and the people who can't seem to win, no matter how many times they run, are pissed off, and now they want, don't want to see them get a raise. I hear, I see in the paper all the time, I don't come to all the meetings, I just come when I get really annoyed, and I see all the time how we are hiring consultants at whatever cost they may be, and we hire a new individual to do a job at whatever salary we give them, and there's never anybody saying, "Hey, we gotta vote on this." But the man that's been doing the job for two years proved to us that he can do the job. And in my estimation, if we lose this mayor, we're, we're gonna go right back to where we were before. The man's getting us on the right track. The council's working with him. Things are happening. I just wish that the people had lost, "Hey, look, the voters voted, okay? The voters voted. You lost. Get over it. Let's move forward." Done.
My name is Sandy Olms from Vernon. No matter what your opinion is, fifteen hundred people signed a petition against the race. No matter what you feel about it, it's their opinion, and it needs to go to vote. According to the statute, that prevails is NJSA forty-eight nine dash one sixty-five. I spoke to Dr. Rioc. He's an expert on the Faulkner Act, and he also confirmed that.
We all agree on that.
Right.
Yes.
And according to that ordinance, or a statute, excuse me, it goes right to vote. The petition gets submitted, and it goes right to vote. There's no opportunity to rescind. So back in two thousand and twelve, you wouldn't allow it to be rescinded. I don't see what the difference is between two thousand and twelve and now.
Okay.
Because you were adamant. It could not be rescinded, and you were right back in two thousand and twelve. So there's no difference here.
Okay.
But you're gonna, you can write your ordinance because the only way it's gonna be challenged is if the public takes it to court. But thousand people or fifteen hundred signed that petition, and you should follow the law. Because if you rescind it unlawfully, you've now violated our First Amendment rights. So can you explain to me what's different? Because, can you explain what's different? Why aren't we following this? No matter what a petition was filed and the law needs...
Well, we could start with a proposition that I would never give two different opinions on the same case. So here's what's different. I'll say it again. Twelve oh one had forty-five or so people in it, maybe even more than that.
What do you mean forty-five people in it?
Whose salaries and wages were included in that ordinance. Those people wanted those raises, and they wanted to pursue the ordinance, and they wanted to, everybody wanted it to go to a vote, and it went to a vote. In this case, people wanted an ordinance repealed. All those people that submitted the petitions included a request for a repeal.
I got it.
The mayor, then, at a subsequent point in time, said he joined in the request for an appeal. Maybe in the world I live in, when parties to a dispute agree that they're not in dispute anymore, the case is over. And, and I don't think, I'm not in a position to tell these people that I work for that we have to go do anything else because it's over. And you could disagree...
We thought it was over the first time, too. Don't forget. We thought it was over fourteen months ago, and it came back.
Well, as you know, nine one sixty-five permits it to come back at any time.
You're right. You're absolutely right.
Any other salary ordinance could come along during this time. But I just don't see that there's a dispute anymore, and, and, and I'm not trying to take anything, I'm not taking anything away from anyone. I can't do that. I'm just saying, I don't see that I have to tell these, these people here that they must disagree with what the parties wanted to do.
But if it's not the law, how can you follow...
Who's sure what the law is? Okay, who's sure what it is? Is there a case? Who is sure?
I've read all the case law.
Me, too. Is there anyone like this? Seriously.
Close, close, but it all says it goes to the ballot.
You could find me one. I'd like to, and I'm not disagreeing with you at all.
Very close.
There's not one like this. And I'm not a judge. As I said before, I'm not a judge. As I said before, I'm not a judge. I'm just a lawyer. And I don't see that we have to do it.
Well.
And I do wish we had a judge sitting here that we could just ask, but I mean, I'm not being facetious with you. But we're not judges, and we don't, we do our best with what we have. That's the best I can do with this.
Well, I believe, in my opinion, that's illegal.
Okay.
If it's, if you're unlawfully rescinding it without a vote.
I understand.
You're breaking the law, and you're depriving the rights of everybody that signed that petition, the opportunity to vote on it. And that's all I'm going to say.
Thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, Mary Bradley, Vernon. Okay, so here's my thing. We had an ordinance to give the mayor a raise. You voted on it, which is your duty. As councilpeople, we elect you to make those decisions, not me. I don't have the information. I don't have the back, the back work, the back paperwork to do it. The petitioners did their right. They went out and they got 1,000 votes to put it on the ballot.
No, they did not.
Rescind the thing.
No, they did not.
What did they get?
They got a.
To put it on the ballot.
Nope. They had 1,000 signatures to repeal the ordinance.
Repeal the ordinance, okay? So what they want is the mayor not to get a salary increase. Is that my understanding? So along comes, I'm speaking, along comes the mayor, in his wisdom, and I believe it is truly wisdom, says, "You know what? The voters, yep, the people who I'm reporting to, let's, let's put this to bed. Let's not have the salary." I agree with it. So is there anything to go to a vote for? Those 1,000 people got what they wanted. The other voters, the other 9,000 voters or so, got what, no, they didn't get what they wanted, but what the heck? You know, we didn't sign a petition. We didn't do anything. We just didn't sign the petition because we didn't want it to move forward. So we're not taking anything away from anybody. You wanted a raise. People said, "We're not going to give it to you, so we're going to put it on the ballot." And then the mayor says, "You know what? You're right, so let's just get rid of it. There's no issue." The interesting part is, and back to what your responsibility, as our elected officials, it's your responsibility to make the decisions and not push it back. I think last week, Councilperson Murphy said she's worried about the disenfranchised people who didn't sign the ballot. Well, they didn't sign the ballot, so what? They voiced their opinion then. I don't need to go to the ballot to voice my opinion again. I didn't want it. That's what they said. I didn't want it rescinded. It's up to the mayor. He's, he's taking it away. There's no discussion. There's nothing to vote on. What are you going to vote? So the 1,000 people get out, and they say, "No, I'm not going to vote for, I'm not going to give him a raise." Well, he didn't want the raise in the first place now. Then what's going to happen? Are we going to be back to lawsuits? That needs to stop. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I have a question.
Your name, please.
I'm just a concerned town resident.
Please state your name.
Vernon.
You can state your name.
Do I, do I need to state my name to ask a question?
You're not going to ask any questions, though. You have, you have five minutes to speak.
All right. My name is Stephen Honeywell, and I live in Highland Lakes. And I have a question and a statement. The first question is, and I think the lady might have asked the question to clarify it, but I'm not sure if everybody totally understands it here, so I'm going to ask the question again. The petition, and I don't know because I didn't sign it. I think my wife might have signed it, but I didn't sign it. The petition, did it specifically state to repeal the ordinance?
Sir.
Or did, okay, thank you.
Here's a copy of the petition. Read it down. The top.
Okay. Petition to oppose and repeal township of Vernon ordinance 14-01. Okay, so an ordinance to provide and determine the salary for the mayor of the township of Vernon. Okay.
Mr. Honeywell, do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments, but I, I'm just, I'd like to look at this a little bit further, but.
May I have that copy?
Okay. Was, it seems to me here that it says, "Petition to oppose and repeal township Vernon ordinance 1401." Okay, so they want to repeal the ordinance. Do they want to repeal it by vote? Or do they want to pressure you guys to repeal it, or?
The cover letter that was submitted from the petitioners specifically, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
The petition to oppose and repeal township ordinance 1401 is the ordinance which we are looking at tonight to repeal, okay? What's going on is that there was an ordinance presented to affix the salary of the mayor at $70,000. The petition came forward, and that's what we are working on tonight, is to determine whether we want to repeal the ordinance of the mayor's salary because the mayor doesn't want the salary increase.
Okay.
Okay? And the petitioners went out with the idea to oppose and repeal this ordinance, that the mayor get a salary increase. And that is what the signatures that they asked for was to repeal the ordinance. It didn't say anything about putting it on the ballot.
Okay, so this petition here says nothing about putting the ordinance on the ballot.
It said to repeal ordinance or place on the ballot in the wording, in the petition.
Okay.
But it's either or.
Okay.
Either repeal it or place it on the ballot.
I thank you for your time in explaining that to me. I had a statement to make, but I don't think I'm going to make it at this point, because I think everything's been clarified to me regarding this. But if, you know, if it wasn't a petition to bring it to ballot, maybe it shouldn't go to ballot. I don't know. That's just my observation of things. But there are laws concerned, and again, as my neighbor said, we should seek to follow the laws. You guys know that better than I do. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Honeywell. Sure.
Gary Mart, excuse me, Gary Martinson. I have a very simple thing here, and this is from the Conflicts of Interest Law. But it begins with, "Public officials should hold the respect and confidence of the people and avoid conduct which violates the public trust, or even the appearance of violation of the public trust." Now, originally, when this ordinance, not the one, not this one, two, rescind, but the original ordinance was brought forward, and we had numerous meetings here, it wasn't just to give this individual a raise. In fact, many of you were arguing that we couldn't get a mayor in this township unless we had a good salary. So I'm hearing something that sounds like it's changed to just this individual, and this individual doesn't want the money, so now we're going to rescind it. Another issue I have is that the petitioners brought it to you, as they mentioned. They had the signatures. You had ample opportunity. The mayor had the opportunity at that point to say, "Rescind it." However, the mayor hired or got counsel and checked into whether or not he'd possibly win. Now, it appears that after that, then he comes forward and says, "I'm feeling good about rescinding this." It sounds like, to me, perceptually, this is a case of you can't win, and so you're trying to make it look better for yourself, which to me is not the public trust. To allow that individual and other individuals to vote either way is what this was all about. And to take that away from people, I think is the wrong thing to do. But that's up to you. But again, from what I've seen, from the way you displayed yourselves and the way you fought for this was not just for this individual, and that we couldn't get a mayor in this town. And now, it sounds like, because this individual doesn't want it, it's okay. Going back to what you were saying, Mr. Kelly, that the ordinance, the ordinance from a couple years ago was for other individuals. Well, this is for other mayors as well, and it's a salary ordinance. It is a salary ordinance. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
No relation. Vernon Township. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I think everybody's been confused since the election about the form of the new mayor. And I don't know if the job description was ever written for the mayor. And I think a lot of people, when this laundry came out, not about Mr. Marata, but just the whole new mayor concept, that there'd be a strong mayor, possibly weak counsel, as they speak about in the Faulkner Act, or strong counsel, weak mayor. So we don't understand what happened, and I think a lot of people are shocked to find out that we, this part-time mayor is also getting full-time benefits. And that hasn't even been discussed on any of this money. I just think people are confused. You got to make a job description and make it clear to everybody how this is going to be for the next mayor. That's it.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Murphy.
No, I'm just talking.
No, I understand, and I'm showing you. You mentioned job description. Right here, the administrative code.
I understand, but the average people that can't even come to a meeting because they're working, commuting, and all this, it just went over everybody's heads.
That's not the council's responsibility.
No, I'm just, I'm just telling you, as a citizen, reflecting how people feel about this whole process.
No, you're asking us.
No, I'm not, I'm not being, I'm not being accusatory. I'm just saying, this is what is going on in the community.
No, my, your comments are received, and I understand that, okay? You asked, perhaps you should have a job description, and this should have been discussed. In fact, there.
I know, and right after the election, you had this big powwow to go over the job responsibilities of the mayor, and you had to figure out where you all fit in, because we didn't have that form of government. But it was never really portrayed back to the people where everybody fit into place, and it's been confusion ever since. That's where I stand.
Good point. Anyone else wish to speak?
Bernie Mangle, Highland Lakes. One statement that was just made is that this is a part-time mayor. This is the first part-time mayor that I've seen that's worked overtime and not getting paid for it. He is a full-time mayor. Whenever you need him, he's there. The second thing is, is that I believe we all had the right to vote in this type of government. We all had the opportunity to do our, our research to find out what we were voting in. So I don't think this came as a blind side to anybody. You had the opportunity to do your research, to find out what you were, what you were signing on for. So I don't see this being, being something that was just thrown at us. We had the right.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Mrs. Lady Kleinwood. Hearing all these comments tonight, it's just so frustrating. I agree with whatever the mayor's decision is, because basically, he's a very wise person, and he really does have our interests at heart as a resident and members of our community. It's unfortunate to even think of the possibility of him not even being here in November if this actually does have to go to the ballot. As we all know, it was published in the newspaper that he is sending his resume out, and he's waiting for some feedback. So with that in mind, it's difficult for, I guess, residents to understand that we have such a great person in this position, and there just seems to be such adversaries as to the job that this man is doing for no, absolutely no reason. His, his interest is for everyone, not just a certain group of people or a certain section of town. It's for the entire community. And it saddens me that everyone worked so hard to change this form of government, and they really don't understand that we really need to seize this opportunity to set precedences for our township. And I think that, you know, paying a person for what they're worth and for the job that they are doing according to the administrative code is the, is what we should be doing. And a salary set at the $70,000 with no tax increase for the third year, as I stated at a previous council meeting, that there was no tax increase, to set a salary for this gentleman who goes above and beyond every resident in this township, is sad that you only have a certain group of people who are against this. And so what? 1,000 people sign this petition. That doesn't mean that in November, they're not going to have a change of heart and vote the other way. Nobody knows that. Nobody can predict that. But I just want to say that I think, I just think that if this is what is in the best interest for himself as a person and a working, you know, person to support his family, then we should all agree to do what the mayor wants, and if it makes the petitioners unhappy that they're getting what they want, that they're getting what they want, that's confusing to me. That's very confusing to me. Like Mr. Kelly said, if two parties agree, there's nothing to litigate, there's nothing to vote on. It's, it's a mute point. So I just want to say thank you, and great job on the budget. I'm happy, again, for a third year that the taxes are being reduced. So thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing that there are no other members of the public wish to come forward, I would like to entertain a motion to close the public portion of this ordinance reading.
Move.
Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto. Can I have a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
I just want to clarify this is just to.
This is just to close the public comment portion. Yes.
Councilmember Kadeh, Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzuto.
Yes.
Councilmember Wetzel.
Yes.
Council President Wetzel.
Yes. Okay, can I have a motion to adopt ordinance 1406?
I make that motion.
Motion made by Councilmember Rizzuto. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Wetzel will second it?
Councilmember Kadeh.
I'd like to make.
Comments, please?
First of all, I'd like to respond.
Go ahead, Councilmember Kadeh.
Thank you. I'd like to respond to some of the comments that were made. First of all, I'd like to say that I agree with Mayor Marata, that we should have had a charter study. We had a charter study for the first change from the committee to the Faulkner Act, and we worked very long and very hard on hammering out the details. But we didn't do that this time. The second thing I'd like to say is that it's very difficult to define the mayor's job as either part-time or full-time. He's an elected position. He's not an employee, and to delineate it either way would be damaging to the office. And I'm sure Mr. Marata, Mayor Marata can tell you that. When he gets a call in the middle of the night, he has to respond. It doesn't matter whether he's full-time, 40 hours, 35 hours, or 15 hours, because that's not the job. The job is to be an elected mayor. And it may require some, some weeks, 70 hours, if an emergency comes up, because that's the job. So I think we have to be careful to try to push this position into the corner and define it. We should all have a concept that he's the man in charge of operations. We should all have a concept that he's the man in charge of operations. And when there's something needs to be done, fine. In the committee, we didn't have that power. The mayor was appointed by his fellow councilpeople, her fellow councilpeople. This is a different position, and it's a new position. So I think we have to be cognizant of those demands. And I think we've all worked in other cities, in other towns, where there's a different concept, and perhaps some of the same concepts. So we have to weigh that and kind of create an amalgam, without spite, without animosity, without adversarial, because this is our job. It's our job as citizens to try to figure this out without all the rhetoric that goes along with it. So I basically feel that there are some weaknesses in rescinding this. I agree with some of the talk, the speakers. The Faulkner Act should be liberally construed for the purpose of effecting its salutary purposes of arousing public interest and placing in the hands of the voter of those municipalities which adopt the act direct means of controlling proposed or already enacted municipal legislation. That's what's being done. And I think that that's what we have to follow. I was hoping that this question would go before a judge, because then it would take all the hoopla away from it. And he can look at the principals, or she, as the case may be, and come up with an appropriate We sat down the first month of our office and tried to figure out what the stipend was. And even before the change of government, I had arguments with Jesse about the devils and the details. And it should have been figured out before then, but it wasn't. And how embarrassing it is for us to try to figure out if our pay should change. And I, my statement then was, "We're still getting paid the same amount as when you were mayor the last time, in the eighties."
That's correct.
Right? So we tried to find some avenue, that we could find some average to bring it into the proper level. But basically, I think in this particular case, we're too late. I don't know what the right answer is now, whether we can rescind it or not rescind it. But I think we're well beyond the benchmark of the deadlines. I think the mayor could have vetoed it if he wanted to, right in the beginning, when he heard the people being in an uproar. Then we had the twenty days. But now, I think it's too late. That's it.
Anyone else have anything? Okay, I have a statement I wanna say.
You can come back to me after that.
What was that?
I said you can come back to me after that.
You can go ahead. I'll wait. Ladies first.
I have a lot of notes written down here because I, obviously, I've been reading a lot, and I look back into comments and things that were made back in 2012. And something that I'd like to touch upon, because there's been this, I think it was actually the Herald that first put out this concept that maybe a committee could be formed to determine what a salary for the position of the mayor would be. And it really does state within the Faulkner that it is set by the council. As a matter of fact, back in 2012, Councilman Rizzuto said that the ranges can be reset by future councils. So regardless of what this council votes on, however it's voted on, each year, it could be introduced, it could be reintroduced when? Every meeting. You know, it, there's no timeline, there's no end to it. A new mayor gets voted in, I don't know, council doesn't like who's there, they could set his salary at whatever they would like. There's nothing to prevent that from happening. And that's how, that's how the law is. Is that correct? So to say what the salary should be today should be tomorrow, it is about the position. I have been accused day in and day out of vendettas and spitefulness because I'm voting my conscience. I'm voting for the position. I'm told, "Oh, no, you're not." All right, whoever wants to feel that way, that's your choice. You're perfectly fine to do that. But back then also, Brian Lynch said, "It's not up to Mayor Marata to set his rate of pay." And that was back, that was back in 2012. So now that the mayor is requesting it be rescinded, if the council voted, and the council was so set on wanting him to be paid that seventy thousand dollars, then I just ask you, and I'm using your words, now you're saying, "Well, the mayor doesn't want it." If you want him to have it, then it should go to vote. It's not what he wants, it's what you wanted to vote for him. If it goes to an election in November, and Mayor Marata gets his raise, so be it. I'll have to live with that, as he has to live with the fact that I got elected. He's made that very clear. I mean, it's, so it's not a vend-
[laughing]
Well, but it's the truth. You know, people don't wanna hear that. There's just, there are just so many twists and turns with this. And I do believe, and I think maybe it was Gary that said that. Unfortunately, the mayor ran out of, and I'll say the mayor, ran out of options. The only thing to do was to now rescind it. Was that correct? Was your statement correct, Ryan, that there will not be another salary ordinance introduced?
Did you read that in the paper?
I think so.
Did I say it?
I'm asked, well-
I don't lie.
But sometimes-
Heard it, you read it, and I've said it to you personally. Don't start this crap with me tonight.
Oh! And you know, here, I was giving you-
I've said that to you-
Excuse me?
A dozen times, I said it to the press. How many more times do I gotta say it?
Why are you getting so hostile? Why are you getting so hostile? I'm asking you, the reason I asked you is because I wanted to know if it was correct.
Yes.
I was trying to give you the benefit of the doubt, because-
Well, go ahead, you state.
No reason for you to get all upset over me asking you a question on the record whether or not the newspaper was correct. Has anyone ever heard that the newspaper printed something wrong?
Ask Rob Jennings, he doesn't think so.
I mean, that's all I was doing, and there's no rea-
That'd be one of the few things we agree on.
There's no reason for you to get all hot under the collar. But that's the point. Now, what's to prevent any other council member from trying to introduce an ordinance?
See, this is why I was-
Oh! But I'm just-
Because I'm the council president, and I set the agenda this year, and I'm not gonna allow another salary ordinance to be on it.
You're not going to allow, let's say you step down, and somebody else becomes council president. There's nothing definitive. That's all I'm saying, is there's, is, could you just ask the audience not to speak?
Keep going, she stopped.
I know she stopped, but when that happens to me, you never call the-
You're gonna talk about other people talking?
I'm just saying that because, you know, what's fair is fair.
You're right. Jesse, please stop.
It wasn't Jesse.
Okay, whoever said it, I'm sorry, Jesse.
It wasn't Jesse.
All right, you're not allowed to talk when council members are right.
I didn't say it was you.
It was my fault. Please stop.
Prime example.
Hey, if you don't want them to talk to you, then don't talk to them.
But I'm saying, that's a prime example. I didn't-
Holy crap!
[laughing]
Please, just let the council member speak.
I didn't say what.
I know you didn't, and I apologize for accusing you. Go ahead.